You can see the flag of the United States of America. Consider the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, endless, for all.
Mayor Hostler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Ideman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderwoman Armory St.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. Who for approval of the agenda?
No approval.
Second.
On paper.
Aye.
Takes us down to our city administrators' report.
So a few items to cover on the report I sent out Monday. We have filled out the paperwork for the urban lending and hope to get a distribution. Middle of this month, we'll see how the state works that out. They're still finalizing what they're doing. They have all of our paperwork that they've requested and they haven't asked for anything else. So I think we signed everything like we're supposed to. We've been in negotiations with Road and Rail about the damage to Main Street where the train wreck occurred. If you've been down there, you've seen the marks and where it's been scratched and where it's busted into the street. And we've gone back and forth with them on what needs to be repaired. In our opinion, and Gary and I have talked about this, is that from where the accident occurred, we need to mill and pave that all the way down to Riverview. By just doing a portion of it, you're going to end up with a potential problem in the future of a seam that opens up and then it's just going to bust up. Otherwise, it's been a, you know, the road's been in pretty good shape. It was a newer road. But they refuse to fix what wasn't damaged. There might be a few scratches on the west side, but not, not to the damage extent that it was on the east side, right along where they park on that gravel. I mean, they had the equipment there and they had the rail cars they pushed off. I mean, there's extensive damage. So that leaves us on an estimate, and this is just an estimate to start off with, of about 15,000 between what they'll pay and what we would be required to pay to mill and pave that. I don't know if this board wants us to pursue that with them, that they pay their portion and then we go out for bids and try to get, you know, go through our proper procedures to fix that road. It might come in less, it might come in the same, I can't guarantee.
So how do we come up with this $34,000 number? Do we have a professional estimate or is that our own?
Actually, Road and Rail had Bowman Contracting give an estimate for it.
And that's their number?
And that's their number, yeah. So I figured it's a reputable number.
Yeah, that's our number then. I mean, I feel.
Is our insurance involved with this at all? Or doesn't it usually, if there's a disagreement, go to arbitration somehow between the insurance companies?
Our insurance hasn't been involved at all, no.
You mean like a car accident, if your insurance picks up and then they go after the?
I just figured it'd be between them to hash it out.
How would that get resolved? Joe brings up a good point. If not through the insurance company, is there another vehicle to do that with?
Not that I know of unless we go through the courts.
Right. And Mark, your opinion of success?
I have not seen any reports on any of this, so I cannot give an estimate as to whether or not we can recover the entire cost. I'd have to be given all these documents and, you know, I know your way, just roughly the meeting reports, but nobody's asking for analysis, but.
Would that be step one in a process then? They have Mark review?
Yeah, you have, I'd have to take a look at it. I can give you analysis of what I think would be likely outcomes. I mean, generally speaking, you know, the same legal principle, I don't know what the facts are, you know, other than a train cart went off on the road. The question is, what is the appropriate measure of damages? You know, and so just from hearing what you're talking about, Road and Rail are saying, well, we're going to fix the damaged area, but it's kind of like if you have a car with that frame, you know, it's a total loss, or you have a higher loss than just fixing it. It's not like you patch a pothole if they caused damage to the entire road. And so we'd have to see if we have an expert opinion that could say, you can only appropriate remedy to repair the damages to mill it up. And then if they don't accept that, then we'll go litigation, it's a battle of the experts and all that. And we're not, we're not going to give attorney's fees back generally on it. So that would be, have to be part of the consideration that both sides would have. Either side would have attorney's fees and costs associated with either prosecuting or defending it. It's a long way of saying I don't know, so I haven't looked at the relation yet.
So Road and Rail hired Bowman's to provide an estimate. And now they're saying, even based on that estimate, they don't think that's the appropriate amount of action that they need to take.
Yeah, I mean, it's their number. If it's their number, then I would think that they should be wholly responsible.
In discussions with them, we told them we think the whole road needs to be repaved. So I think what they asked Bowman to do is to look at what that cost would be to mill and pave it all, and then see if that fit within whatever budget number they had in mind. And apparently it does not.
So, I mean, doesn't this come back against their insurance? Or are they talking about just paying out of pocket to avoid the insurance? I don't know.
I mean, I don't know from their side what their, what their intention is when they're getting the money.
So this $19,000 figure, I mean, are they talking about not doing the milling? Are they talking about just overlaying?
No, what they looked at was 150 feet from the edge where the damage occurred, full, full width of the road, about 150 feet. And then the rest of the road is half of it, all the way up to Riverview.
So there'd be a seam right in the?
Right in the center, yeah.
In the middle.
Yeah.
You know, I had somebody comment to me the other day about one of the streets in town and motorcycles. And I know when you go up on 61 where they've done all of this patching, you feel that seam where they've just overlaid. And I don't know, I don't ride a motorcycle, but that kind of seems kind of dangerous to me to have those seams like that where they just kind of overlay stuff. I mean, do we need to get an estimate or from another company to prepare?
Well, I think the estimate is accurate. It's what do we want to do? What's our next step? Where do we want us to go next?
Yeah, we got to either press them with litigation to pay for the other half. And the problem is, they tore up half of the road with their equipment. And on the other half of the road, we had two spots where we have to fix it because we had water leaks on our half of the road, which, which we were figuring that, right?
Right.
There's two spots where we had to fix the water main, you know, but they don't feel that they should have to fix that in that half of the road. The problem is, they're going to, they're going to pay for just what they damaged and then put that seam in there. Which it's brand, it's a good, it's a new, it's a new overlay, and it's not good for us to have that seam in the middle of the street. So we, do we press them more through litigation? Do we turn it into insurance? You know, and if you go through litigation, we could fight this, you know, or, you know.
But, you know, I know a lot of times in a commercial, you know, situation like that, somebody will come back and they'll just lowball it, you know, to a point and stuff. But I would, I mean, what's it going to cost just to have Mark send them a letter representing the city, that if they don't pay this?
So in order for Mark to send in the letter, the first step would be that he has to have time to digest and review the information.
Have defensive time to get him familiar with the situation.
So, does anybody disagree that that'd be a good logical first step?
I think that's a good first step, and then we'll reconvene and consider our options.
No.
Yeah, I don't think we can just say, okay.
I agree.
Yeah, I'm not agreeing.
On that point though, do we all agree that regardless, if we, if we take money out of the consideration, we don't halfway do that repair? We do whatever's the right way to do it.
I hear you. And what I'm thinking is waiting to hear back from what Mark lets us know his opinion is.
Right.
And then we go from there.
So, but the full repair is a hard requirement from this table.
That's what I'm feeling.
Yeah.
They're lucky it wasn't much worse than road.
Yeah.
So for them to not want to help out with this, because they don't take that into consideration, they could have, this could have been a lot uglier if somebody was on those rails. So I think, I think we're in agreement that Mark digests it.
Yeah, you're right.
Thanks.
Have you heard, is there any other, I know there were some close calls, is there any other litigation pending about this?
Not that I'm aware of. No, I think, I don't, no, not that I'm aware of. My conjecture. So, okay, we'll move forward with that. We'll take a couple avenues and I'll get the information tomorrow. Dedication is tomorrow for Stormy Crawford Way and the Fish and Wildlife Refuge signage. It'll be at 11:00. At the levee, this is part of what you all approved, is putting a parking area in. It's done. We'll have it out there. So end of Division Street, where it hits main, turn right, follow it all the way to the end, and we'll have a quick, a quick dedication tomorrow. Special budget work session next Thursday. Please make sure you keep that on your calendars. We'll start at 6:00. Each department head has requested large capital cost items. We'll, I'll give you, tonight when I'm distributing, I'll give you what I recommend, and you've got that in the email as well. But there's some other stuff we need to discuss tonight as well. But that will be, what the discussion will be on Thursday is going over those big items for your approval or for you to, you know, whatever my recommendation is, you can, whatever, it's your choices. You're the ones making the decisions on how much we need to spend. That'll be next Thursday. And the other things that we've talked about internally, I didn't have it on here, is COVID and the issue with the rising amount of cases that we have. We're up to like seven cases average a day now in St. Genevieve County, whereas back in May and June, we had maybe one case on average per day. I'm sorry, April, May, June, July, we had one case on average per day. Forty-one new cases in the last week. The question is masks and wearing masks and requiring them in City Hall and the Welcome Center, and then if we have visitors in our, in our offices. Chris Collins is here to talk about that a little bit, directly because of the Welcome Center. But, you know, if we have visitors in the Street Department, Water Department, Water Plant, whatever, is there a point that we need to start requiring masks? If we get up to 10 cases a day, say, on average, is that when we start putting signs back up saying, hey, if you come in, got to wear masks? We'd have to mask during our meetings as well? I don't want to go back to that, but it's just, we're, we're seeing an uptick. How do we protect ourselves? How do we protect each other? Kristi, one minute. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'd like to hear from, you know, have the people from the Health Department maybe swing in for a meeting. Give us their thoughts on everything, because I, they're firsthand, right there, front line. Like to hear what they have to say. I mean, maybe we don't need them every meeting yet, but I mean, at least one to kind of give us an opinion now, so we kind of know what's going on.
Right. And I know they don't want to do a mask mandate. All we're doing is just talking about City Hall. We're not talking about the city. We're not talking about anything beyond just the facilities that we have indoor. Outdoor, we're still, you know, everything's open. Chris, give.
Yeah, you know, the federal government, all federal government agencies are mostly.
Chris, come up there. Will you come up to the podium, please?
I can do it. So all federal agencies are having to adhere closely to CDC guidance. We're using the CDC's COVID tracker to look at it county by county to see which counties are in a high level of transmission, which most of Missouri is, including St. Jen County. Given that, we are required, whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated, to wear masks in all federal facilities, as well as social distancing, six feet, if you cannot maintain social distance no longer than 15-minute exposure and in a proximity closer than six feet. Given that we don't have any mitigations for this weekend for jor-efet, we've decided in order to protect our employees that we will not staff the Welcome Center for the weekend. Instead, an alternative, an alternative for us is to set up a mobile visitor center that we're going to have in the backyard of the JB Valley House, where we're going to have tents and some merchandise for sale. This is really the first time we've, you know, encountered a situation where we didn't feel that we would be safe in the Welcome Center, but just depends on this fall and how things go, future events, we may be in the same situation where, you know, if we can't adhere to mask mandate, we can't adhere to tighter capacity limits in the Welcome Center, that, you know, our staff will have to be pulled from that location and we'll have to figure out something else. Any questions about where we stand on that?
Is the federal government requiring any vaccinations or?
I'm glad you asked that. We're hearing rumors that we're on the verge of that, where we will be asking our, we can ask our employees if they're vaccinated. But I've heard that perhaps very soon, you will have to provide proof of vaccination or be subjected to what could be weekly testing in order to come to work and be in a federal building. That's just rumor, but, you know, we've been hearing more and more about that and we're just waiting for further guidance.
Thanks.
Thank you.
An update on what's going on with COVID.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're expecting a large crowd and, of course, jor-efet, so our staff has got to cover everything in the Welcome Center, because otherwise we close it up and you lose a cooling center and bathrooms.
So what kind of, what kind of, do we have any signage down there right now? Are we recommending masks for visitors, especially because we're expecting a large group and they're going to, it might get very crowded in there?
We, because we haven't required anything at any of our buildings. I mean, we have, we have not set up anything for this weekend.
Do we still have hand sanitizer? The plexiglass and stuff?
We've got the hand sanitizer, I mean, you know, we've got everything. We can give them masks if they want to be able to hand out masks for those that want to wear them. We don't have, we don't have anybody to regulate it. I mean, you'd have to stop people at the door before they go in to wear the masks to, you know, to make sure they sanitize hands or whatever.
How many, how many workers will we have there this weekend?
Usually, what we're shooting for is two at a time.
Two workers?
Yeah.
At a time?
Yeah. But, you know, we won't be, you know, be directions only. We're not going to be selling anything. We won't be doing anything beyond.
Right, right. It'll be just people be mainly coming in, cooling off, using the facilities, you know, so.
And using the bathrooms, and they'll have to be cleaned often.
Right.
I would at least like to see some signs that emphasize the current CDC guidance and would like to see us support that. I don't, I'm not saying a mandate, but I think that if we could at least encourage it and let people know it's appreciated, especially to protect our city employees.
Does the government have any regulations on signs or?
Yeah, and we do have new signs up in all of our federal buildings that say masks are requirement, are required. And I've talked to Happy about, you know, seeing if we could try, have someone at the door to enforce. We just don't feel comfortable being enforcement agents. If we had law enforcement available, we could limit the number of people coming in and out of the Welcome Center, then I think we would be comfortable being in there over the weekend.
But we can put up signs, right?
Yeah, only one problem with that, is just we have not gotten to the point of saying we're not requiring it as a rule. And that may be the number is 10, and we start getting 10 active cases on average, and it may just be we start putting signs up saying you have to wear a mask in the building. Because that number just keeps going up.
Well, that's, we, we probably need to decide that now. Because if, you know, we're going to be, we'll be here next week for a work session, but you're two weeks out. In two weeks, a lot of things can change. So what is that number? For Happy to make this decision, because he's going to make the decision, because he's in control of all the employees, so is there a number we want out that?
I'm recommending 10, because we're just at the point, the county still hasn't seen the numbers that our surrounding counties have seen, but it is right.
Yeah.
And we're, according to the CDC, we're high transmission, just like almost every other county in the state. So I honestly think that that time is now, since we're, since the county is dark red on the CDC map.
Right. Well, Bob recommends, so called, the Health Department too, which I think is.
And additionally, looking ahead to that, I mean, with this to weekend and the potential for thousands of people to come in and mixing both out-of-towners with the local community, our.
Exposure is going to go well.
It's extremely likely that our, well, our chances of our exposure are going to go up, but it's extremely likely that our numbers are going to skyrocket a little bit.
Happy, what is our employees here deal? How do they?
I mean, nobody's really expressed a concern about wearing masks except down at the Welcome Center. And that's because they've been working with the Park Service. And they've been wearing masks. They've been doing that every day when people come in. They make sure they have it all. So that's, it's the only group that really is exposed to the public on a consistent basis.
That is a big concern down there. Here, we can limit it. We, we have a door that's locked. We can keep people out. So down there, we can. It's a, it's a wide open door, so why don't we enforce it at the Welcome Center, a mask mandate?
The question is, how do you enforce it?
Well, I, you don't, you put up a sign and, and just encourage people to wear masks. And then have our workers that are working there this weekend wear a mask.
Well, I think if it gets unruly, then you're looking at the, you know, as, what the four? If you have somebody that's getting unruly and not a possible, I mean, you're looking at getting in security with our law enforcement. I think it's too bad.
I think if we encourage and not mandate.
Yeah, well, not mandate and just encourage, you know? I'm not, you know, I'm not, you know, that we have to do that, they have to, but we just encourage. And then make sure our employees are wearing masks.
Yeah.
Are we able to take the extra step of having masks available for people that don't have them?
Yeah.
We can have masks there. I think we do that, especially for this weekend. I think we, if we're, if the, we need to just continue to do that until this number goes back the other way, especially at the Water Center. We can do that. We could, here's a lot different here, because we have a, you know, we can control the environment here, you know, so. But down there, you're, and this weekend, there's going to be a lot of people from a lot of different places.
So our primary concern, as I understand it, is to protect our employees at the Welcome Center, but not to mandate and try and dictate what the people who are visiting need to do. Is that where, because that's where I am?
Because we can't enforce it.
Because I don't think.
We can't enforce it.
And it's going to be a very slippery slope after what happened last year and a half.
Yeah, but we can encourage people to wear a mask.
You can, but, and you can also protect your employees, but I would not mandate it.
No, no mandate. It's just, just encourage people to. But mandate that our employees wear masks in the Welcome Center.
Copy that.
They've already talked about that, that they were going to do that.
Right. And there's protection up, they got the shield, and we fared pretty well the last time, so we'll get through this. We didn't have a jor-efet last year, so a lot of people coming to town.
Yeah, the other option is to close it, so I don't think anybody wants to do that.
No, I don't want to do that.
No. Okay, that's all I got.
All right.
Kenny?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Should have a copy of my report in front of you. Probably the biggest thing we got going on out there is the painting project, and they have officially moved their trailer and their lift over to the firehouse. He had sent me a text message the other day, said he was going to start power washing today. I've been out of town the last couple days because of work, so I don't know if it got accomplished today, but he will be working on it within the next couple of days. And we've got it prepped. Our guys took the letters off the front, took care of that. The sandblasting was done. I spent quite a bit of the time out there with them, and the painter came in and they were more than satisfied with the job that was done. So everything's progressing very well on that project. We should have it hopefully done within the 30 days. He figured he'd probably spend an entire month out there by the time they do the trim work and prepping and everything. Open to any questions you might have.
You had a report from the testing on the trucks.
Yeah, we're in the period that, your NPA sets standards on what your guidelines should be for making it safe for the employees and the volunteers out there. So every year, we do SCBA testing. We test how much they flow, make sure they're meeting the standard there. We also do a compressor test, because we have to send it off, make sure we get the purified air for them. We just did our pump testing on our big trucks. That has to be done every year and they all passed. And as I put in the note, mechanics that come down and do the, the testing for us remark on how well the trucks are maintained, they wish everybody would keep them at that level. And I just got a message as I was sitting down from, we had our ladders tested today too. All ground ladders and the aerial was tested and they've all passed too. We got one minor thing we'll have to take care of on the aerial. Shaft is rubbing somewhere, but that shouldn't be a major deal. So everything that we do is passed. One thing that will be discussed in budget, I talked to Happy about it, is this coming year, our SCBAs will need to have the bottles hydrostatically tested. They're needed to be done every five years. So there's going to be a line item this year for annual testing, which will include all those different things. Before, I would pull some out of this line item, some out of that line item. So now we'll have a line item for annual testing. And it'll be more this year because of the hydrostatic test, but it's only every five years we have to do that. And it just helps cover us, because now we've tested everything, you know, something fails and it's, we've done our due diligence on the city's part.
Chief, for lack of a better way of saying it, you may have already covered this, I may have missed it. What is a good comfort zone as far as our staffing? Are we in a good comfort zone? Are we in dire straits a little bit?
I would say we're to the point of dire straits. We can get by, but if you look at our staff, really, we've got four or five guys that are in the 60-plus range, and those are the guys that are doing a lot of the stuff during the daytime, like right now. We had guys there today for the, the testing and they come in, but those aren't the guys that are actually going inside and fighting fire. We had a call that came in as a brush fire the other day, ended up being a garage fire off of Market Street. And we ended up with five guys in gear and myself and four other older guys doing support operations. And luckily, we started the automatic mutilate, so we had Zell and St. Mary come in with five additional people to help us. But, yep, we need to do something somehow.
Thank you, sir.
We've, we've done about as much as I know that we can do. We're advertising, and the Herald's doing a great job for us. We appreciate that. We also have Facebook going, we've got the internet, the website going. We have a sign in front of our firehouse. And recently, we signed with Robinson Sign out there, no cost to us, whenever they got space, ad. I haven't seen it yet, but I've heard a couple guys said that, that seen the ad there. I don't know how much more we as the department can do. And I'm looking for direction on any ways that you guys have suggestions to improve it.
Do you think like a, like a community event of some sort or being, you know, out there, like our fairs or at the park or something, like having something set up for information? Or maybe if there, I don't know, if there's a way to make the train fine or something, you know, like a test, you know, like try it out kind of day?
We could potentially try that. We have gotten a guy or two over the years for some PR. We do, we'll have to do as much PR as we can getting out there too, but that also takes manpower and hours. There's other options I've looked into, things like junior firefighter programs, but that takes manpower and there's liability issues and insurances and all that stuff that has to be looked at there. There's the Fire Explorer Program through the Scouts. We've looked into that, but once again, it's another manpower issue. And if we're having trouble getting guys there for trainings and classes, where do we find the manpower? Because I'll be honest, I'm stretched to the limit right now trying to keep it running. And we've got, I've got a lot of help from a lot of good guys out there helping to keep it in line. Without their help, we'd be really hurt.
I mean, we've talked about it, it's come up about incentive programs before. I don't know what that would look like. I don't know what is enticing, if somebody wants to do that type of work, but any ideas that you have, I'm certainly open to hearing.
I can put something together. I've talked to quite a few departments around us, and this is not a St. Genevieve County problem, it's a nationwide problem for volunteer firefighters everywhere.
Volunteers, period.
Perryville, believe it or not, I'm talking to one of their people, and they actually actually pay forty dollars a night for training. They pay forty dollars for the call, and they will also pay like forty dollars a day to go, we took four guys to FDIC in Indianapolis, they pay forty dollars a day to go to those kind of things too, and they're still having trouble recruiting and hanging on to people. So number-wise, I, I don't know what would be enticing, and then if you start out with something, it might work for a little bit, but then is it enough to keep interest? And I don't know, I'm looking for any kind of suggestions. I can certainly do some more polling around some of the neighboring departments and see what they're doing. Some of them are paying by the call, some of them are like us, and we don't do a pay-by-call. That, I can come up with some kind of survey at some of the neighboring agencies.
Great.
Is there like a survey maybe that we can put out, um, about, I don't know, asking questions and trying to get it out to the demographics that would potentially serve on this, of, you know, would you consider it, what types of things would make you consider it? I don't know what the questions would be, but is that something we can think about? I, I don't know.
Somebody's got more expertise on that than I.
Yeah.
I think maybe a great starting point would be to have Chief come back to us with what other communities are doing, so we can educate ourselves and then maybe decide what the next step is. I think we need to benchmark what others are doing, because as you said, nationwide, nationally, volunteers just aren't there.
Yeah, there, there's so much things, in, in days gone by, you had a few things you could volunteer for, and that was it, but now with kids, with all the sporting events and all the school things, and working two or three jobs to make ends meet, they're just, they're not there anymore. And unfortunately, small-town USA, a lot of our demographics that we would be looking for don't live around here, and they work in the city, and by the time they get home in the evening, five or six o'clock at night, they don't wanna have to go sit all night long, have training at firehouse yet, so.
People don't wanna work for pay.
Some people don't.
Jobs that don't require them to run into something that's on fire, they don't wanna work for pay.
And Chief, one, good point. One final question for me is for our insurance purposes, uh, we have to be eighteen, what's that, we have, what is the age?
I would have to look at it, our standing rule's always been eighteen and twenty-one to drive a truck.
Eighteen and then twenty-one to drive.
That, that way we can get them in and get them the basics of the fire operations before we worry about putting them in a truck, but all our people are cross-training to drive the trucks, set them up, and get water flowing until relieved by an older guy.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Hey, I know we've talked about it before, the amount of training that we require or we have to require, you know, for them to be different levels, uh, in the department and stuff, but I mean, is there, uh, start of paying them, maybe, is there anything that we can do to change some of that maybe, because I, I know it's a lot of hours.
The, uh, the base training that we require for everybody is the monthly training meetings, which is only one night a month of three hours. Uh, when we can, we try to send them to firefighter one and two, which we think is a good standard level. If they're not to that level, they don't know a lot of the details of fire behavior and how different things operate, so we think that that's really important. Uh, the problem we have there, a lot of it is scheduling. We get guys that come in, I've got one guy that is looking forward to it, he works nights, so he's gonna go to class from like six o'clock in the evening until ten, and then have to go to work at TG, the overnight shift, yeah. But we get shift workers that are switching around, it's hard to get through the schedule, so we try to get one and two, we do a real good program in-house of training. Uh, the state has also kind of messed with us a little bit, they're going to accreditation system, and with the accreditation system, they've eliminated some of the certification classes. There used to be a forty-hour basic firefighter class that we would send them through first, and that would get them the basics before jumping into firefighter one and two, but the state has, in their infinite wisdom, eliminated that for accreditation purposes, they want one and two for accreditation. But what we usually try to do is we try to train at or above the firefighter two level with our trainings, but because we haven't had anybody be able to go recently, we're back down to doing a lot of basic training with our guys now too. And if you do that, then you start to lose the interest of the guys that have been there a while, because I'm going over this stuff again, it's time for, you know.
Chief, on a, on a brighter note, uh, thank you for what you do operationally to keep that running, and I think we probably should recognize the fact that you do a very high volume of grant writing, and your success rate seems to be good, so thanks.
I appreciate that. I have had unofficial word that the radio grant that I got has been partially funded, I don't know for sure yet, but I've, I heard that we might have some radios coming too. But that's all, gotta be approved by the state before I can make any announcements on any amounts or anything.
Well, good, good effort on your part, putting in the work.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, so, just to kind of add to what Mike said, you know, it always helps to have a professional firefighter leading the way, and I want to thank you for over and above there.
I appreciate that, but it's not me, the guys behind me are the ones doing the job. I just sit in the desk and do the paperwork. And the grants.
We've got a great group of guys, without them, I couldn't do what I do, so they deserve
as much credit, if not more, than what I do.
You said something about if you were a ladder truck?
It was a, a, a power steering shaft that was rubbing.
Oh, all right.
So it's a, it's a minor thing that we'll have to adjust the clearance, but.
About a warranty thing?
Uh, probably not, because it's two years old already, but we'll look into it. Uh, I did recently get a notice from Rosenbauer, the company that makes it, on a Cummins recall. I have to take it over to TAG and have them look at it. I think we are gonna fall into that recall notice on some of the fuel system, so I gotta get some more details on that, I just got the letter Wednesday.
Many of the SCR, do you know?
Don't know yet.
We've had to have like dozen buses.
I know it's got to do with the Cummins diesel between two thousand sixteen and two thousand twenty, I think it was.
Okay.
And I had Charlie look at the, the VIN to verify, and we are in that category, so I have to take it over and have it evaluated, and we'll take it over to TAG Truck Center in Farmington and go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kenny.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Chief. David?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Got my report there, you see, as far as the Heritage Commission, we held a special meeting last week at a applicant request, and they were very appreciative, we don't have any other applications to consider, so our next meeting will be, uh, in September at this point. Finally got the reimbursement request submitted for the Historic Preservation Grant we approved about a year and a half ago, so, uh, but that went well back in May, and now the request to be submitted, we should see a check for eight or nine thousand, hopefully back to us before the end of the budget year. Down under the Building Department, um, thirteen building permits, I just, you know, we've had quite a few permits, uh, fifty-two over the last four months, now the majority of those are roofs, fences, signs, but, uh, we've got some construction going on around town, so, uh, it's, it's, it's been good. Um, let's get down to Board of Adjustment, you can see we received a variance application last month and have tentatively scheduled the hearing for August thirty-first, so the Board of Adjustment's been notified, as has the applicant. Um, and then down at the bottom there, you can see where we're at with the, uh, nuisance and vegetation, some of that has already been resolved, because these numbers were as of, uh, Friday last week, but, uh, fairly consistent there with nuisance and vegetation.
Is that down this year, is any question?
Uh, I think the vegetation is.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think everyone's kind of getting the hint, so, yeah. We have a few repeat offenders, you're.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Very much, Harry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Got my report, uh, we repaired a storm drain on St. Mary's Road, it was a collapse, and it was kind of shoddy the way it was put in from the beginning. Uh, we did some sweeping, we patched some potholes, replaced a cover pipe at Ninth and Washington, we mowed and weeded, repaired damage to the backhoe, weeded the ditch from Center Drive, uh, painted curbs in yellow lines, and we started painting intersections, and I think we're down to just that side of town now, other than, uh, the four-way out here, we're gonna put down the meltdown striping on that, that'll last longer. Uh, replaced a stone on the storm drain at Lutheran Church, and dug out and put base and asphalt to the pouch at Rosier and Park.
Kerry, how was the backhoe damage?
It was a freak accident with using it to remove a tree limb.
No injuries?
Nope, and we went through the process, I called Happy, the employee went, had the drug screen, I got a material or a parts list, submitted it, and.
In-house fix?
Yep, everything was bolt-on, which they designed in that way for.
Good idea.
Yeah.
What's the timeframe for the backhoe that the, for the repair at Washington and Ninth?
This coming week.
That's good.
Yeah, that's gotta be done before school.
Yeah.
And I had Bowman's put that curb in yet too, when we get that part.
Right, okay, thank you.
And we, I made contact with the gas company on all the risers and stuff for our painting projects, and me and Cory did the manhole risers, so everything should be set and ready to go on, all that, when, when it's all ready.
What, you got a curb there on Ninth and Washington?
Where we dug that out.
Yeah, right there comes the.
Oh, just at the top of it?
No, right.
Comes down, not Washington, makes a turn on the ninth.
Oh, where you put in the.
We're bumping it out farther to kick the water back in the road instead of down.
You said that silver pipe down.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, to come out, I had Buck up there, look at, make sure we still be good with the buses and.
And just run along.
[laughing].
Oh, that's.
Alton Valley Springs where there's, uh, sidewalk and washout issues, do we know when that section's.
I was gonna let it sit there a couple of good rains.
Okay, yeah, because I noticed it's still hollow under the sidewalk.
To, to see if anything else showed up, and then we could shoot some more in there before we asphalt it, I mean, concrete it, probably wouldn't do a good asphalt sidewalk.
And on that easement out there, there's sinkholes all, all within that easement, all the way back to the back storm drain, is that just a responsibility to fix the, fix that between, do you know where I'm talking about? It's on the, there's two homes there, and there's an easement with electrical and stuff between the homes out in Valley Springs, um, on Valley Springs Dr- Trail. And it, I guess it goes all the way back, because there's a storm drain in the back part.
That's the one we worked on a year or so ago?
Yeah, I believe so, but there's, uh, I was out there the other day, and there's sink, like little sinkholes showing up all along with that easement where it's sinking down, it's a huge tripping hazard, but it, but it looks to all be within the easement between the two homes.
So it would depend on what's causing that issue, if it's just settling, it's not ours. If it's something to do with that stormwater pipe, then yeah, then there'll be our problem. That's a lot to, we might have to camera.
Run the camera, yeah.
See if, see if we've got some issues with it. Yep.
Anything else?
Are you painting like, uh, at the end of Mark Three and Sixty-One, those lines?
Actually, I'm, I think I'm gonna have enough meltdown to do those out there too, so they'll stay better.
Good, good.
The meltdown, like, the striping like MODAT uses?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Kerry, that's the plan.
All right.
Good plan, staying in. Are there any committee reports?
All right.
I'll just chime in real quick, just to say the movie's in the park, we're gonna, tent number three, uh, tomorrow, tomorrow evening.
You just need to have it rain or shine.
Yeah. Maybe if it rains, maybe we just move it up to the Duke Pavilion or something, huh?
There you go.
Hope everybody brings some, something comfortable to, to sit on, but tomorrow, six o'clock is when the activities start, um, we just have some games and whatnot, but, uh, the movie will start when it gets dark enough, so probably about eight-thirty, between eight-thirty and nine o'clock.
Very good, thank you. Are there any public comments? If there's no public comments, we will take a motion on the consent agenda.
Can you go first?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Takes us to whole business, takes us to the second reading of Bill number forty-four, forty-three.
Move approval.
Hold it, wait a minute, I gotta read.
Hey, that's all right, I'll move through one.
An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve Missouri to establish a procedure to dispose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials.
And you're on.
Now you're up.
I'll second it.
Number roll call, please.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Arbrister. Eight yes, zero no's, Bill number forty-four, forty-three now becomes ordinance forty-three, sixty-four.
Very good, thank you, takes us to the second reading of Bill number forty-four, sixteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an, and execute a tour agreement with French Colonial America to ordinate tours.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Arbrister.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Ideman.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's, Bill number forty-four, sixteen now becomes ordinance forty-three, sixty-five.
Thank you, takes us to bill, this, new business, Bill number forty-four, forty-five, an ordinance approving a memorandum of agreement with Alliance Water Resources Incorporated, a Missouri corporation, to modify the initial professional service agreement dated August twelfth, twenty-ten.
Can, can we have a brief discussion on that?
Absolutely.
So, I'm, I'm probably the only one in this position, but when I, when I'm looking at the section that is referred to in five-four, it, it just seems, it seems awkward to me, the process, and I'm wondering, uh, from Happy, from your position, is that, uh, in a similar agreement, other places you've been, is that kind of standard where if, if two parties don't, don't agree, then it's an automatic increase based on Consumer Price Index, is that?
Usually there's two ways of measuring it, and what they, at this point, are doing is bringing something to us, and I think it's also, it's almost like a penalty where if you don't negotiate as the city, then it's gonna be automatic, and you'll know what that number is.
The, the, I mean, not that I have a problem with it, but what seems awkward to me, it almost seems like it incents the contractor to not, to not come to an agreement. Is that just my read on that, or is that?
I think it, it motivates both parties to come to an agreement, you know, for them to bring us something that we can agree to, and then make that automatic increase, or make that increase, uh, without having it go to the automatic. Prior to that, the increase was between three and five percent in the contract, so we talked him down a percent, and then we reduced it to a five-year contract, so those are the changes that we made.
I mean, all things considered, you're, you're comfortable with the wording, and you're comfortable with that.
Yeah.
That process, okay.
Yeah, I understand it.
Good question, Mark. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, takes us to Bill number forty-four, forty-six, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with the St. Genevieve Chamber of Commerce and Joy French of St. Genevieve, Missouri, for a painting of a mural, mural on the north side of the city called Bill.
Joy French has come to us and said that she does not agree with this contract, so this ordinance goes away. She will bring a separate drawing to the city for the board to review, it will not be the St. Genevieve logo, it'll be something that she comes up with, and it'll be up to you guys to approve or not approve.
Hey, I had, I had somebody ask if this turns out good, if we could do something on this side of the building as well, because this one's just hideous.
What she's asked us for is, um.
That's what I was, that's the wording they've been using for me.
She's asked us to help with, you know, payment on paints and, and the seal and all that sort of stuff.
She's willing to do another one, yeah. I mean, that's not unreasonable.
No.
Happy, I may have missed it, but, and I know we're not gonna talk about this right now, but it's just something to think about. Anytime I do home painting, I have to do it every three years or so, um, what is the maintenance plan on this? What is, what are we gonna do to maintain this, so we don't just put something up and then it gets cracked and faded? I mean, is she gonna bring a contract that has some type of maintenance plan to this? Because you put a great mural up.
Yeah.
Five years later, it needs to be repainted.
Right.
So can you ask her that as well?
Sure.
Thanks.
You call that the tater.
Thanks, Prince.
Let me get the power washer.
And start over. Okay, if that's what it is, I'm good, I just wanted to know.
We, we did talk about it, but no detail, so I mean, that's good to dig for detail.
So I didn't miss it, right? Okay, thanks.
So that's going away.
Yep.
Is there any other business? If there's no other business, we will adjourn this meeting and go into, uh, take five minutes, Gary wants five minutes. Five minutes, Gary.
Buck, just five minutes.
And they may have expertise that we don't have. We have corporate knowledge that they don't have, but we all have access to the same talent pool if we choose to make those I do think that if you're dealing with a firm that almost certainly is gonna bump contract price by one and a half, two percent year over year, you're dealing in one-year increments, I think that that same firm is in danger of pricing themselves out of the market in a very short amount of time, three, five years. And then whoever's at this board at that time has to make a decision, oh man, how do we get it back under our control? So I mean, I think there, you can't future-proof it in that way. You can only look at the present. But I think the manpower resource is more robust. I think the training programs available are probably exponentially better than what we provide. And, you know, I definitely don't say that to disparage any management or past management. I just think that is what it is. And I think to not consider it is not me doing my entire job. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Paul, and I had, I received some input. I had a couple of emails in favor. I didn't keep track of the phone calls, but I can tell you they were over. The two emails were for keeping it the way it was. The phone calls, and three of the phone calls were adamant that change, we needed to do something, you know, and...
Did they say why? Can I ask that question?
Um...
I mean, I mean, is...
Just not happy with the way things were being done.
Such as, though, I don't, I don't see where, I'm having a hard time seeing what we're not happy with. I, I mean, I look at our town, and I'll tell you right now, now, you've been in this town a lot longer than I have, but this town looks pretty good. We've bumped it up since we started enforcing our rules and regulations on getting things painted and cleaned up. I think our town looks good. It's not our streets department's fault that our streets are falling apart and our sidewalks are in disrepair. That's a money problem that's been neglected for that reason from the board. So, and I just don't, I have a hard time, and I'm not discrediting anybody. I know, I got sent a text message that was very, it was, if I wish I could have found out who the name of that text message was because I wanted to talk to him because it was disrespectful. It was hate, it was hateful. And, and you know what? And it was unwarranted because I went back and looked at what was, the complaint was, and my God, I couldn't find a thing wrong. I couldn't, you know? So, and I'm not, and I, and I understand the change, and I understand, it's, it's great to look at all that, but I'm, I'm still under the, the assumption that why would we want to fix something that's not broken? I, I don't see the brokenness in it. I really don't. And, and like I say, I will do, I'm just telling you my heart on that, but this board is gonna decide this decision. And whatever the board decides, I'm gonna be with you a hundred percent. I'm gonna, you're not gonna hear me in this community down, I don't do business that way. It's a democracy, or whatever, you know, I, first is the people. And I've always said along, the most, in our business, our customers and our employees are our most valuable assets. So, I want to see them both taken care of, you know? So, and if we want to change that, it's the board's decision, so.
You know, you asked what the comments were. The comments were, the two basic that I heard repetitively was efficiency and maintenance. That was the two biggest concerns. You know, and I, you know, we don't live in a perfect world, and I understand that.
Absolutely. And we've had that discussion about maintenance and taking care of stuff. But that is, if that's a problem within our department, that falls directly on the people that run our department. That's Gary there, and then it's Happy's issue. And if we have an issue with that, with our employees, or whatever, we, we talk to the leadership and get it corrected. So if there needs to be more training, you know, all I heard about was this backhoe. How come this backhoe got tore up? The backhoe got tore up because we're using the backhoe. A backhoe is, is designed to dig. It's not designed to go up and reach and get limbs out of trees. But, but we don't have the equipment to do that, so we have to do stuff like that. And, and things are gonna get tore up. When you're using equipment, I got guys who use equipment for stuff that's not designed to do. And that's where we get into trouble. It's, it's, the poor guy was on there doing it, asked us, assigned to do a job that, that we shouldn't have been doing to begin with. We should have had something a little bit different, but that's neither here nor there. It's a small, it's a small, it's a small.
Do we not look into rental equipment?
Right.
At my company, when we don't have the equipment, we call it in from a rental company that supplies it. Why we're running equipment unsafely as opposed to spending the money to do it right and protect our employees?
But you know, you don't, you don't have a...
I agree, I agree with that, but there again, too, is, we're all about saving money. We're all about, and it comes to that.
Not, not when it's coming to people's safety.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
I mean, if somebody would have said, okay, board, here's your two options, I don't think anybody at this table would say, operate that backhoe in an unsafe and unafforded manner.
When we're not shoring up holes with our employees in it, that's another safety concern.
And then that, I followed up, and I heard that same argument. When I went by the hole, it was shored up.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is the mayor's saying that it's definitely the responsibility of this board to decide what to do. I think from talking to many of you, I think you, for the most part, know where you are on this. So you have two more weeks to talk to your constituents. I propose that we bring this to the agenda next week to vote on it so that we can do our jobs and decide.
I would, I would...
So I'm thinking, because I've already had my feedback as well, and unless somebody can come back and give me more cons to outweigh all the pros, I'm ready to vote.
I, I would propose another alternative, a third option, in that we seem to have, we have a variance in knowledge base, okay? And I, and I've, I've been all around the horn. I've talked to everybody involved in this issue to, to the best of my ability. I feel good about how I feel about it. However, I'm in disagreement with my ward. How's that gonna work? That's hard to resolve, right? But we have, we have this disparity. We have two organizations, both with, with great intent, both are doing the job, you know, but we have one organization that just has vast resources that one doesn't have, our city doesn't have those vast resources. What would it take us to get them to a level where now we're talking apples and apples? Because right now, we're not. Right now, in my mind, we're, we're two different classes of workforce. I don't mean to insult anybody. That's not my intent. I'm only trying to tell you how I feel. So we have two different classes. How do we get that to be even across the board in a way that makes the decision even? And we could come to a vote. We can do what you're talking about. I have no problem with that. But I don't think it's even across the board right now.
Well, I think we have people who are already polarized, and one, or one or two on the fence, which is a very challenging topic, but I think we should ask the aldermen and women, do you want it on the agenda at the next meeting?
And to move this forward. And I'm gonna say, because it's gonna make a resolution, I'd like to see it on the agenda, number one.
And, and I would be opposed.
Okay, so that's, would you like it on the agenda?
The reasons I would like it on the next agenda aren't to necessarily rush through this, but if we can aim for an October 1 start, then we've got a full year of budget numbers that we're working with. If we wait to prorate this, we could potentially be dealing with two different budget ideas. Alliance, if we decide to go through with it at a later date, would be inheriting whatever budget we set for October 1. So Alliance might not be able to do what they're promising to do. We might have to renegotiate some of those expectations. So if we can shoot for an October 1 date and get this on the next agenda, then that gives, that gives a little bit of time for employees to better understand, you know, we're not rushing them as quickly. You know, if we wait till the end of, or the beginning of September to bring this to a vote, then it's, well, do we start in October 1, or do we push it back?
No.
Because the longer you wait until September, the shorter their weeks are till October 1, and they've gotta change their shirt if, if it goes through. What I would like to see, because I know there's been some questions about how the employees aren't sure what the benefits are for Alliance, I would like to see this on, for an ordinance vote on the next agenda, and maybe a little bit more of a formal presentation to the employees about what they could expect if they go into this. That way, they can start making decisions on, if this is gonna go through, you know, if we're not gonna wait to do this, then, you know, do I apply for Alliance? Or do I look elsewhere? Or, or things of that nature? Or what their benefits are gonna look like? How is this gonna affect my family? Because this is not something that we've taken lightly at all. I can't count the hours that I spent each week for the last several months on sweating whether I would bring this up, whether I would take the talks further. And ultimately, the committee's conversations have led to this point. And so I understand what it's like to be on the uncertainty of your job position. I've had that in my career more times than I can count. So I don't take that type of decision lightly.
Ashley, I can get to where you're at, but the, when, when we talk about a rush to October, it's almost not necessary, and if you, if you follow, let me know if I'm off-base, please let me know. All the values are known to us now. So we know these numbers, and in a budget that we review and approve and go forward with, we now know these budget numbers.
Yeah.
So that's, I have to, I kind of have to discount that.
We would just have to renegotiate line items potentially.
Yeah, yeah. But overall, we know.
Okay, so what I hear right now is there's two for, two against. I'd still like to go around the room and get a feel. Jeff, would you mind sharing with the committee what you think as far as the agenda?
We'll put it on there.
So there's three, there's three for, two against. Suzie, would you like to see it on the agenda for the next meeting?
I'm honestly not sure. I, I do feel like I'd like to hear from more people.
So is that a no or a yes?
Um, it's a no for the next meeting.
So for next meeting. Bob, where are you on this?
I mean, I was ready to vote tonight. You know, I don't have a problem putting it on, you know, the agenda, but one thing in all of our discussion, and I like Ashley, I've put more time on the list than I really had time to do and stuff, but, you know, this wasn't easy. But, you know, the one thing afterwards that I would have liked to have done, I would have liked to have the committee sit down with Alliance and the employees, because I did hear back from that, well, either the employees weren't told about it or didn't hear about it or something, but I would, I would like to have a meeting with the committee, with Alliance, with the employees, you know, basically that if this thing does go through, they know exactly what they're getting into, they know what the insurance, the pension, you know, everything is and stuff, and I wouldn't mind hearing their opinion, you know, of saying this is, you know, it's open about it. I mean, I think there's some...
Did we talk to, did we, I know we talked, we did a lot of talking with Alliance, but did we spend time talking to our, our employees and our, the city?
Not that I'm aware of, or the committee didn't.
The committee didn't spend any time with the street department?
What would we ask?
I don't know. We, I guess it's, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, if we do due diligence, do we, did you, did you afford Gary the same amount of time as, as Steve?
But, but time for what? We were asking Alliance questions. What questions do we need to ask the street department is my question.
Right. I mean, I don't...
If somebody can come up a question, certainly let's ask them. Let's check all these boxes. I've had that question asked me before. Did we talk to our, our current staff? No, because, well, one, if this, if these talks didn't go anywhere, why would we start a ruckus? Also, what questions do we ask? You know, do you like working for the city? You know, those types of questions, you know, do you like your job? Yeah, we can ask that, but how much do you think you should be paid? Do you think this benefit's better or that benefit's better? If I can negotiate my benefits better at my job, certainly I would. But, but that's not what an employee's position is supposed to be.
Yeah. I, you know, and I guess the one thing that kind of came up for me to help me decide was safety. And I'm not targeting Gary by this, just a simple question. You know, when we negotiated our last commercial insurance, one of the tipping points for that insurance company was, they came in and laid out dozens upon dozens upon dozens of free programs they had out there over a whole wide issue of things. I mean, there was a list, it was, I don't remember how, it was a page long of stuff. Have we used any of that? I have a problem with that.
We used other trainings.
Right.
You're safe, because I asked that question. Safety's big to me, too. You know, and, and I'm a safety director, you know?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If all these things are going on with the backhoe, with this and that, how come nobody's ever asked me a question? Everybody banks on what they hear from somebody out in the public? You know, I've heard that we don't grease no equipment, we don't maintain it, we don't have any grease guns. That's not true?
Gary, I asked about the backhoe when I read your report. That was the first I'd heard about it. When we took that tour, I did notice that there were a bunch of broken windows, and I did wonder why that didn't get fixed. And I should have asked you that night.
It was all in the process.
Okay.
And I did have a fault on that. I turned everything into happy. He wanted to report the turn to the insurance company. I was waiting to hear back from the insurance to order the parts. I contacted him, and he said, no, go ahead and get them ordered. So there was a couple weekday in because of that. But other than that, I mean, we, I followed the procedures, and I called him for the drug test, you know, priced all the parts, and everything was stuff we could fix, so there was no labor, you know, involved on in that direction. I mean...
I, I personally not heard anything about, I mean, when I saw your report, that was the first I'd heard about it. So I took the opportunity to ask what happened, because I was mostly concerned that somebody got hurt. And I am concerned if we were using a piece of equipment in a manner that's not intended to use, and that's safety. So that's a conservative one.
Gary, I appreciate what Gary's trying to say here, you know. I'm like that, too. A yes or no vote and move on, you know?
I would like to make a motion to go into closed session quickly.
Second then.
Personnel and contract negotiations?
Correct.
Call in favor?
All right.
Roll call, I'm sorry.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
There you go.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Parent?
Yes.
Alderman Auger Sturz?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, seven, ten.
No.
I have no question.
Any questions, Bob?
Nope.
Nope. All right. You want these back?
Oh, yours.
Oh, good. Thank you. All right. So...
All right, this is, uh...
No, you can keep them.
This'll be a little more difficult.
Yes, we'll move on.
Drew Bunchy, you can go.
He runs with his hair on fire.
Good night, Mark. Thanks a million.
Don't drown out there.
You have, we've got multiple pages of paperwork, but the main things, you'll also get copies of these when we sit down again next Thursday, so don't worry about saving it. The issue that I have to bring before you, because I'm making recommendations based on what our, what our reserves are, what our revenues are, that sort of stuff. So you have two budgets in front of you. Notice, they're both have highlights on them. One is that we do not transfer money from the general fund into the capital projects as we determined last year. The second one does say we transfer...
Oh, man.
Might be kind of hard to see right now, but...
Is this how we're gonna...
The, so I've got, you've got the items that have been requested by the departments. You have that to look over. The top sheet does not include the $325,000 transfer. The bottom sheet does. And what that will tell you, and I need for the board to give me some direction on this, again, the request was to move 325,000 like we did last year based on the Piva sale, move it to capital projects. However, if we do that, then we will not give raises, we will not be able to buy most capital items because we cannot meet our 50% budget requirement unless we really, really cut into budgets and get into all of our operational budgets and try to bring it down. We're about, we're at about 45% if we make that transfer, and that is not including a number of capital items that we, that I am recommending in the other budget. So just for the police, we don't buy a car, we have to move the police remodel money to a different line, we have to do the computer network install, we have to get vests, so we can take that out, but we really need more vests this year. We don't do ABL, we don't do video surveillance, we don't do training, we don't do tasers. So there's a number of things to think about.
Happy, do you know, in order for us to stay at the 50%, what portion of the 325,000 we would transfer?
It would be less than 100,000, because I've done the calculation.
Okay, thank you.
It's a good compromise, though.
Am I good to go?
Yes, sir.
So Happy, basically, we're using that money to balance our budget.
You got what?
What?
So, that means next year we'll have to do the same thing.
Unless we have a spike in our income, yes.
So in two years, what will be through the Piva building money?
We don't spend it. We just, it stays in reserve so that we can balance our budget based on the 50% requirement that we have for our, our fund balance.
That was only self-imposed, that, right?
Self-imposed, but you did, you did approve it as a, as what you wanted to be able to do.
Happy, I missed the, I missed the vote somewhere. You said your recommendation was what?
So the top sheets.
Which is this one?
Which is this one, right?
Yeah, the top sheets, I'm recommending that we leave it in there so that we can balance our budget and purchase what I think we need to purchase. I don't recommend everything, but we have a number of items that we do have in our general fund.
And this sheet here is the one that is.
Copy that.
The second one was where we pulled it out from, we pulled out the 200, 325,000. And again, if we do that, if we pull the full amount, then we end up, you know, we can't include raises. It includes the hospital increase, and a number of capital items that are pulled out, just to make it, just to get it to the 45% level. That's not even up to 50% at this point.
So the bigger issue, the path to get well over the long term comes by collecting a higher tax level. We don't, we don't have any way to get well from this.
I think, no, I know.
In the past 10 years, our taxes have been the same.
Oh, my God.
Up a little bit.
Please don't talk about raising taxes, because we're...
No, I think what you have to look at is, you know, over the years, we're gonna, we'll save a little bit every year. We just can't pull 350,000 out and do capital improvements and do our, our standard budgets.
But Happy, are you also including the sale of the other two properties in the general fund also?
Oh, good point.
It's worse than 325.
The sale of the other...
Yeah, the five acres, the two acres.
Those were included in last year's budget. So that's already, that's already money that was deposited. What I'm not including is money from Brett Purges.
I was gonna say, is that's not in there?
No.
Right, so we've already spent those other two sales money?
It's in the budget. I mean, it's, it's in our, in our cash reserves. We pulled out 325,000, and those amounts should go into this fund, not into capital projects, because those weren't purchased with any special money. That was just property that we had available. And it'll, it'll make a difference if we do sell that complete property to Brett Purges, and that'd be 200 and some thousand. Then we can make that transfer. But I don't see us making a issue.
Sure would have been nice to spend that money for a capital approval.
Again, I want to emphasize, we're not spending it, we're allocating it, saying, here's how we balance our budget. If I don't have that in there, we're less than the 50% that this board requires.
And did we set that 50% by ordinance or was that...
Yes, we did. Yes. Unless that's something you want to revisit, it's pretty, it's done.
So some of the reason this is big, this is kind of problematic, is this, this big, I'm calling it big, the health insurance increase, and because we want, and because we want to do the raises.
Right.
But this...
Oh, I could read it better without the...
Because the employees, they're gonna pay more health insurance, it'll go up to 20%. And we're looking at a health insurance premium anyway, increase.
Right, right.
You know, that will, that'll happen down the road. But we aren't giving any raises. I mean, we're not looking at the 1% co-op and 2% merit to get that to balance.
Right.
That's a good point. Insurance numbers would change if we...
If Alliance...
If the lines...
Right.
Because we have less...
Nope, wrong department. That's street.
It's going from one...
It's all general fund. But I think if you're gonna do this in this department, then you're gonna go across the board, not giving raises to everybody. You can't just say it's City Hall or Police Department, and, I mean, but it doesn't affect, it means more money to pave streets, because you wouldn't be including that as part of the payroll.
I'd have a hard time not, not giving raises. I mean, that's the beginning of a bad situation.
Well, I mean, yeah, I, I don't want to get into that, not giving raises. I mean, I think they deserve it. But I also, on the flip side, I'll go into my little speech that I have every year. This year was the first year we saw any kind of meaningful return on our police cars. Now is not the time to quit that program of replacing every two years, or we're gonna be right back to getting nothing for our vehicles. The two that we got rid of this year weren't really necessarily desirable, but from here on out, I believe all the ones that we're gonna be phasing out each year are gonna be a lot more sought after because they're the SUVs, and we're gonna see a lot more return on them. I don't want to get back in a hole again of having more repairs than what the cost of the vehicles costed like we were in years before.
So the possibility of not doing the police car replacement program like we've been doing is a no-brainer to me.
I'd hate to see us not see that through.
What is the year cycle on that?
Basically, five years.
Five years. And it's two vehicles every year?
Two vehicles every year with one on call.
Yeah, but Joe, we're still not to the program. You sold the unit initially, we buy two cars.
That's because we, that's because we kept, we're still getting used out of the choose-sold trap. We're still getting used out of one of the Tauruses that Dave drives, the Explorer that Happy drives. We're, we're catching up on all our other vehicle needs in the city and placing dilapidated vehicles. This past year was the first year that we saw any good returns because we offered two good cars for sale. Now the ones we're offering next year, is she still here? Am I wrong that the ones that we're gonna be offering next?
So Happy, may I ask a quick question, sir? So what you need from this board right now is to decide which one of these options are. So if we say your recommendation, we're done with this meeting?
Right.
So, what do y'all think about not making, going with the city administrators' proposed, or, recommendation of no change?
No change.
Well, you know what I mean, no tran, no transfer, rather.
Eric, can you finish what you were gonna say?
Um, so we, we budget, we lease our cars, and we've got five leases now. So now we're gonna, when one lease falls off, we're adding one more. So the budget's not gonna go any higher. Like, the money that we are budgeting now will, will stay about the same as long as we keep the program in place.
And then you'll just see a better return whenever we...
Correct.
Yeah.
And we just got close to seeing that return this year for the first time.
Yep.
And I think it's gonna get better from here on out.
Just to touch on that, I did look at some of the other listings that went that day, and there were some pretty, pretty shoddy cars that were well, you know, higher mileage and, and years and stuff that went for about the same. So I don't, this isn't a comment about whether we should or shouldn't, but I don't know if the, for other municipalities, if the past year that we've had drove them to look at a used car at...
going through the bills that we've paid. And this is what we came up with, with the number, so this will be one lease going off and one lease coming on. And it should, it should level out. I mean, there will be a little influx just with inflation as the cost of the cars go up, but as far as the lease, I mean, it should stay pretty static for a while.
So I was thinking that was like 98,000 last year.
And this, we can't go back and look at our budgets, because it ends up giving us an actual budget, you know, for figuring it out. And we went through this two or three times with Sue and with Pam, trying to figure out, because it did seem like it was a little bit less, but everything that we can tell, that includes all the leases that we have active.
Excellent. Thanks, chief. So Jeff, no transfer, Mike, what are you thinking, no transfer or transfer?
I think we need, I think we need to go through the exercise to transfer and retain the reserves. So what I heard was that there's, there's less than 100,000 on the table to make that happen, right?
Yeah.
That's the way I think it should go, just by, just process, regardless of dollar amount, just to go...
Start getting some transferred over.
Okay.
I mean, that's almost...
Joe?
I get it.
Well, last year, we elected not to transfer, and we were going to transfer this year, and we're in the same boat, right?
We transferred half last.
We transferred.
We transferred 325 last year, and we were going to do the same this year, we split it in half.
But leaving it in there for budget purposes, and I believe in years past, Mark was always confident that we would be able to realize savings throughout the year, and we didn't need it anyways. But keeping it in there just for budget purposes is just to keep that number, which is set by, we set by ordinance. That doesn't necessarily mean it's going anywhere, correct?
Did you say transfer half, or would you say transfer limit?
So a number was identified, and I'm not, I don't remember, but it was less than 100,000 that we could transfer that and maintain.
To keep, is it 50%?
50% transfer the rest.
What are you thinking?
I think I can agree, meet the 50% as stated by our ordinance and transfer the rest.
Buck, what are you thinking?
Yeah, I agree with that.
And then work on trying to get the rest of it transferred the following year.
Bob, where are you on this?
Oh, I, you know, I was kind of adamant last year about keeping that money for a project, you know, that we desperately need, but in our next year's budget and stuff, are we budgeting for the same amount of street overleaves?
So this doesn't apply to the street, because it's a separate budget, separate line item. So we're looking at, we're looking at 200,000 this year, you'll see it on one of your sheets, what are streets, what I've recommended on the streets, and what I think the total is going to be. So that comes out of the street fund, which is a separate fund.
Which we always revisit that halfway through the year anyways, when we know what our snow removal was, our salt, all that stuff.
No, no, we'll budget a certain amount for street repairs next year.
But I mean, once we get a few months into it, and the winter has passed, it opens up a lot more funds to move over, because we didn't spend so much on salt, hopefully, or we didn't do this, or we didn't do that. We usually do that, don't we? At least, that's what I would say.
I don't see it. I, based on what I've seen this last year, I mean, we're going to be about where we expected to be. Yeah, I think our numbers, our number, what we estimate our starting number and our ending number, our ending number's lower than our starting number, so, you know, that, so it balances out. If our starting number again next year is back to what it was to begin with, if our reserve in the street is back to that, then, you know, then we're, again, balancing it so that we're, so we always have some major, a major amount of money in there in case we have a major issue happen. But I, you know, I think we're starting at 600,000 for reserves, 666, and then we're estimating about 498,000 is what our ending balance will be.
Suzie, what's your take on this? What are you thinking, Suzie?
Yeah, I think I agree that we should transfer what we can, but still hit our 50%. I mean, the money, I know it's killing you, Bob, I know, but the money's still there. We used some last year.
We love you, Bob.
We could use a little this year, we can, we can, we can keep it there, and we can still use it for that purpose.
I didn't pass you up, I gave you a chance.
It's been, yeah. I think there's just other expenses that we need, we need to consider the big picture.
Move what we can now, and do what we can to go where we can.
What do you think, Buck?
Just keep it running tally and try to get eventually the...
Because I agree with Suzie and Mike and Ash.
I agree, I know what you're saying, but I agree with Suzie.
It's going to be hard to recover from, but I, I, we don't have anything else to sell, except for the purchased property and...
Yeah, it's better for sure. I agree with you.
For some places around when we spent all the lease money, you know, we paid 1.2 for the building, we got, you know, less than 700,000 for it, and we had nothing in the fair.
We also had a few years, right?